Yes, sir.
Oh, you're loose.
All right, good morning. It's nine o'clock, regular session, Monday, August 12th. We have a full quorum, can you certify the meeting was properly posted?
Yes, sir.
Please rise for prayer and pledges, gentlemen.
Our Father, we look before you this morning, taking your presence in this courtroom, Father, that you may guide these gentlemen in the direction that you wish to continue to go. Father, we thank you for all that you do for Walker County. We thank you for all that you do for each individual. Father, we have a verse this morning from James, chapter one, verse two, three. In the King James Version says, "My brethren, we cannot all joy when we fall into divers temptation. Knowing this, that the trying of the faith were temptation." Father, the King James Version, where temptation is better translated as trial. Father, we all face trials in our life, and may we understand that it is a blessing that we go through the trial. Father, thank you for the guidance through each individual trial, and may your will be done in all our lives. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
A wonder they do so alive in the United States of America. And to the public which stands, one nation, under God, in the Lord's law, liberty, and justice. Honor the Texas flag, and the flag of Texas, one state.
I didn't get any citizens input. Consent agenda contains twenty-three hours. Any pool?
You're gonna fix it one little correction.
What, bring that, so it'll be.
So I don't have anything for.
That's your motion?
That's my motion to approve the consent.
I'll second that.
Move, signal on favor.
Are you going four twenty-three?
No. Uh, Bill, all in favor raise your hand.
He's gonna go read it.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna go read it. Sorry. Statutory agenda, Special Prosecution Unit, discuss and take action on dual SBU Google Meet Hardware License with SADA.
Morning.
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 We're here to run our, um, call it a day. It's a contract for two hundred fifty dollars. It's one license. And Quentin wanted to contract him, said it was good to go.
You know. Make the motion to approve, item twenty-four as presented.
Moving, signal on favor raise your hand.
Thank you, man.
Motion carries, thank you. Twenty-five, presentation of Commissioners Court Leadership Academy Session Three Certificate to Permission at Decker. Dr. Skud.
Y'all know that y'all have to get continuing education units to hold your county's county commissions. A lot of those are done through the B G N, through county government, uh, a branch of the Texas State National Equity Extension Service. But there is an opportunity to enroll in what they call, uh, Commissioners Court Leadership Academy to get some, uh, a little bit more advanced training. Uh, our real Mr. Brandon Decker is participating in that, and I guess you're three quarters of the way done now?
Yes, sir. This week will be the last week. It's been a very excellent program.
Good, good. A lot of those, uh, I've done extension leadership, and it was, I highly recommend it, so y'all, since similar to ours, it's, it is very well put together. So I'm here to present a certificate, uh, certifying that you have gone through Session Three of the board, which was in Washington, D.C., uh, seven days.
Yes, sir.
They were there to educate you.
We educated, we got to exercise too.
Yeah, I don't see how you can find anything good out of Washington, D.C.
So, uh, without further ado. Thank you, sir.
Awesome.
Thanks for participating, and hope you get a lot out of it.
Now, you can give us a quick overview in about two minutes, what you learned.
Lot of walking in D.C. Uh, I learned that D.C. is run by twenty-five-year-olds. Interesting. Um, we did get to go and see, uh, like where the, all of our staff are housed, we met with them, we met with, uh, like, when we were there, I talked to them about uh, the problems we're having on Gus Randall with service and, uh, things like that. Naco, National Association of Counties, I think, we were a part of that for a while. Uh, Ms. Tricia, got to go meet with all those people, see the things they do, and very informative. Got a little bit of free time, got to go see the Arlington Cemetery. It's the second time I've been there, it's very moving, so, very good program. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Everybody should go to D.C.
Yeah. Twenty-six, discuss and take action to appoint presiding judges for the term of September first, twenty twenty-four, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, is nominated by the parties to chairs. That's my motion.
Sure.
Moving, second it all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action to approve attachment B of the joint elections agreement of, for the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general election. That's my motion.
I'll second that, but what is attachment B?
Uh, yeah, included.
For the election judges.
It's their, their training. Yeah.
Okay.
If you'll look on, well, mine's under twenty-six.
Yeah, okay. I still got the second.
Okay, moved, moved the signal on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-eight, purchasing, discuss and take action to approve award for brush grinding and mulching for precinct three. Carol?
I'm Mr. Cheryl.
I'm Mr. Cheryl.
So, uh, we've contacted that we have a pile of debris that needed to be mulched from precinct three, and these are our bits.
This is famous.
It'll be reimbursed?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-eight, awarding the grinding and mulching to Southern Star Trucking Enterprise, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Moving, send it all, favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-nine, presentation of Walker County Clerk, budget summary, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Morning.
Morning. Morning, Karen.
This is just an overview, um, the county clerk's responsibilities as county recorder are to process, file, and record all real and personal property records, assume names, et cetera. We provide public access with an index, uh, public records and issue certified and non-certified copies of those public records. We also ensure records management activities are conducted in, in accordance with state laws and rules of the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. Last year, recording has increased one percent, nine percent over a three-year period. We average about sixteen hundred recordings each year. Vitals has increased eight percent over the last year and twenty-nine percent over a three-year period. We are now averaging a total of six thousand vital records per year. Case management, civil. The county clerk serves as the clerk for Constitutional Court. Cases may be filed in the court where they're, and the controversy exceeds five hundred, but is not more than two hundred fifty thousand. I believe that's the number, but I think statute has changed that. Civil cases has increased six percent over the last year and thirty-three percent over a three-year period. We're averaging about two hundred cases a year. Probate cases, um, these are filings of wills for probate, uh, wills for safekeeping, registering the court guardianships, are just some of the basic functions in probate. Probate cases deal with protecting the witness rights and obligations of persons regarding their property when they are unable to, as a result of death or illness. Probate has increased four percent over the last year, five percent over a three-year period. We average about two fifty cases per year. Criminal misdemeanor, um, our duties in criminal cases are varied and include filing cases, issuing processes like citations, uh, warrants, collecting court costs and fines, receiving and filing all papers. Uh, we do class A and B misdemeanor cases. So, uh, those have decreased about nine percent over the past year, and a decrease of about eighteen percent over a three-year period. Unfiled cases were five eleven last year, and we average about six hundred cases per year. The registry of the court, um, this is the balance that was in the account as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. It just shows the cash bonds, the civil registry, the probate registry, um, total right now is about eight hundred thirty-nine thousand. Accomplishments and training, um, leadership and training with personnel meetings have been implemented to improve communication within the office, employee performance and interaction with the public. Other conferences and house training and online training for staff will transpire throughout the year. Uh, this is just a photo of one of the state conventions and, uh, um, kind of what we've been doing. Any questions on that? Performance measures, this is kind of what we were going over a while ago. This is just putting it in a spreadsheet form. Goes over the three-year period.
Any deal for why they're going down? Are we just getting all the bad guys out of town, or?
No, a, a lot of it is, is gonna be, um.
Looks like probably COVID catch up in twenty twenty-one.
That is, you know, different things that transpired through statutes and stuff, and different things are required for criminal cases that weren't before. That would be more of a.
Will and quit.
Quentin probably answer. I do know that in civil, we did have some decreases in the past because people were coming in and getting occupational license, and then they started going to the JPs, getting occupational license. So the county was still benefiting from it, but it was cheaper to get that from the JP level and the county level. Um, so some of the numbers went down and fluctuated because of that, but on criminal, it's.
No doubt.
It, a lot of it, to be honest, um, way back when we were a cash cow down there, and we would pull in sixty to seventy thousand a month in court costs and fines. Now we're lucky to pull about fifteen thousand. Lot of times the criminals that do end up pleading, go on probation. They don't pay anything, so that, that's gonna be, that's my end of it. I don't know why they're doing that, but that's my end of it. That's the end that I see. I can't speak for the course. Any other questions? Uh, financial trends, this just shows the, like what I was talking about a while ago. Uh, in case management, how it's dropped fifty, sixty percent, um, in income. That's roughly the split with the state. I know the numbers are not exact. Ms. Allen would have better numbers than me on that one. And then the expenditures, personnel has increased, that's because over the past few years, we've been getting the pay differences and the salary study, and operations is actually decreasing. Any questions on that?
Nope. I love what you do down there. That's a lot.
Number thirty, presentation, Walker County Clerk's Records Management Summary.
On the other side of what the county clerk covers. For the purpose of records management and preservation is, is to define the restoration and preservation plans of the county clerk's office for the upcoming fiscal year. We have been ongoing for many years to preserve documents and conduct activities as desperately needed. Original records are now secure from eighteen forty-six through current. In nineteen sixty-five, microfilming came into the picture, and their originals were given back to the owner. We do have a digital copy of that document, however, we don't have paper anymore. Uh, the goal of these efforts is to digitize permanent documents and make them available and usable to the public in digital format, thus protecting the original documents. And I know that some of y'all had gone through whenever we had done our phase, some of the phases in there and saw the difference in the books, um, where the math was restored and, and books have been restored.
That was interesting.
Phase two was the commissioner. You want it?
Nothing.
Phase two was mainly, uh, the rest of the D books, and this just shows a photo of what they look like in the D room. Phase three consisted of some of the probate records and, uh, Commissioner Court Minutes and cattle brand books, and if you go into the D room, the books that are blue are probate, the books that are black are Commissioners Court. All of the red books are your D books. Uh, this is the plaque cabinets, um, as y'all are aware, we do have plaque cabinets on order. I did that a couple weeks ago back in court, um. Way back when cabinet, our first cabinet was thirteen years' worth. Now we're in cabinet eight, and we're looking at about one point five years to fill that cabinet up. And this is just a photo of what they look like on the, the mylars that are hanging in the cabinets.
Karen, where are you gonna put the new ones?
I'm gonna restack the black cabinets that we have in there now. So there is a black, kind of a metal antique thing that they're sitting on. I'm gonna take that out, and we're gonna actually put like some four-by-four or something underneath it, just so it doesn't sit on the floor, and then we're gonna stack them floor high. That's the only place we can put them, partly because of the weight.
Yeah.
Uh, present inventory of records. This just goes over kind of where we're at. We have birth records, eighteen seventy to current, death records nineteen, thirteen to current. Uh, bonds and oath, it's unexpired to current, marriage nineteen sixty-eight to current. Civil cases, probate cases, and criminal cases are all still being backscanned as time allows for the staff, so that is an ongoing project. Commissioner Court Minutes are digital eighteen forty-six to current, and deed records are eighteen forty-six to current.
You have to keep these forever.
It's permanent record. Now, they did change statute and state that, you know, Texas State Library and Archives would consider a digital record permanent. My only concern with that is, what if we have no power? What if something blows up the cloud, or whatever they call it, then it's gone, so.
It was saved in like four different places.
It is. But I'm old school and like to put my hands on it. I'd rather have the paper. And, and two, if you go back in there and start looking at some of that, I know a lot of people, some people this day and time can't read calligraphy, um, but it's really cool to go back and, and read the penmanship and how they were writing back in the old days and stuff too, so, kind of cool, um. The archive fee, the vital fee and the records management fee have to be approved every year. The background of this is it allows us to assess a fee up to ten dollars for the preservation of older records filed with the clerk. This is the county clerk archive fee. The fee is part of the adopted budget. The vital fee, um, the Bureau of Vital Statistics may charge fees for, for providing services to the public. Count, a county clerk may collect a fee not to exceed one dollar for the preservation of these records. And records management, um, the county clerk record make, records management authorizes the clerk to collect a fee not to exceed ten dollars for non-court related services designated for deposit into the records management fund, and is to be used only for specific management and preservation, including automation. Next. So currently in our records management account, this is through June of twenty, or Ju- June twenty-fourth, with the interest and revenue projected to come in, plus with the expenses. Out of this account, we do have one personnel. This is that figure, that person does not make that much. That is the, uh, base plus benefits, uh, operations, uh, the plaques, cabinets is what we're gonna be pulling. I think plaques are coming out of archive, uh, but in this account, we'll have about three hundred and five thousand is what we're projecting at the end of twenty twenty-four. This is the archive account, yeah, plaques are coming out of archive, yeah. Uh, this just shows what we've had so far, same date. With expenses, the plaque cabinet, um, and pending preservation work that we're working on, which have about two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Uh, that means we'll have roughly five hundred and thirty thousand between both accounts. And we'll use that for archiving, preservation, different projects. And this is just kind of an update of the preservations that we're working on, where we're at, um. Hopefully try to get as much done as we can over the next year and keep it, keep it going.
It was a big project, but it, it's forever now. That's the cool part, because we saw some of the stuff he brought early, the really old stuff that were pretty much useless to a person.
Yeah.
Until they ramped up, where you can read it, so I applaud you and your folks for taking that on and then kind of staying with it too, so.
It's very interesting, and, and, and you learn a lot, and we ended up figuring out a bunch of stuff about the county that some people didn't know, because way back then, the minutes on those pages had faded, you couldn't read it.
Yep.
Until they digitized it, then you could zoom in and read stuff, so, interesting. Um, I know that the next item is the approval of these fees, but this is what I'm at, what y'all will be approving on the next item. Do y'all have any questions about that?
That's pretty much been the same, no?
Yeah, it's been the same. I just have to bring it every year.
Hmm. Number thirty-one, discuss and take action on county clerk statutory designated fees for record management archives and vials.
Move to approve the fees.
I'll second.
Moving, second all in favor, raise your hand. It was unanimous. Oh, discuss and take action on constable fees, twenty twenty-five.
I've gotten with RT on this, and there, there are no changes, so it'll remain the same.
All right.
Moving for approval for the thirty-two as presented.
I'll second it.
Moving single, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Daddy.
Thank you. Kind of exciting, her stuff. We were able to go back with the minutes and stuff and trace precinct three's commissioners, but all the way back to what we started, right? So we listed on our wall of every, every commissioner, of course, Mr. Yalberton made it easy, he was commissioner for forty-eight years.
It took forty-eight years right there, right?
He's on the plaque out here in the courthouse.
I ain't dead old, so.
All right, number thirty-three, discuss and take action on order of general election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Moving, saying that all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Discussing, number thirty-four, discuss and take action on notice of elections for November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Moving, saying that all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-five, discuss and take action on Southeast Texas Resource Conservation Development, twenty twenty-five sponsorship dues in the amount of five hundred dollars.
So, I didn't put this on there, but I'll talk about it if y'all don't mind. So, S, R, C and D. Two years ago, we've got some funding for, uh, Trash Bash. Can't get funding every year, but, um, it's coming year for Trash Bash, so my motion's gonna be to approve, uh, sponsor it, using five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Moving, saying that all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-six, discuss and take action on the purchase of generator for precinct three and four to be paid from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, project contingency. No.
That was fun.
Yeah.
Um, so the, a point that was, that was very much brought to light during the last storms we had, we were down a week or better, and you were down. I saw your stuff seven or eight days in there, but you were down. Um, the JP next to us was out, um. So we have, there's money in the project contingency fund, um, minus eighty thousand plus or minus, and, um, yours, I, I don't have yours on.
It was twenty-five, I got it in right.
Mine's that much, I have three buildings, gotta be split up, one of them's three-phase, stuff like that, so, um, I would like to, um, for my portion of it, then you can chime in on your part, I would like to see by getting a generator put out of our complex.
So my part of it is a twenty-five, uh, the internet runs through the JP office. JP office was down the entire time, and then therefore mobbed. We can do our normal day-to-day functions. We have no email, no internet, no phones, nothing like that. So, to get them up, I think, uh, Judge Cole did several evictions in the parking lot, uh, because we didn't have any power out there, so.
Tricia, what's in that fund?
Well, 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 no.
And that's in this budget we're in, right? Yep. But I, I do have one question.
I'm, I'm gonna help you guys get there. But when, when we without power, are these other officers gonna show up to work on? No, we don't. Because, I mean, I have an issue with it when they just don't show up if they have a generator there.
Oh, yeah, we show, they show.
You know, so, I mean, like the JP office, I mean.
He held court in the dark.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our shit's working.
How often has he ever done it before?
This is his first go-around.
Yeah, he's the new one.
Oh, you're talking about Randy?
Yeah.
You're, okay.
All right, he, he, he's got free reign here, he's.
It's not JP two.
Yeah, what about my JP two?
JP two don't have nothing.
Put it in the agenda, and I will go for it.
Danny, you got one?
No, well, they got one of dispatch. I mean, that's the, it runs the whole.
No, no, you're.
Oh, it's a deal, no, I ain't got no deal, no, my building's the oldest building in Walker County, probably.
My only problem is we got the DA, Danny doesn't have them, JP, JP two doesn't have them. The bottom floor of the annex doesn't have it, the courthouse doesn't have it, Andy doesn't have it. We got a lot of buildings that doesn't have a generator.
Well, and the annex is the one that hangs me up, you know, um.
That's in, that's in the queue for one of Butch's grants. I don't know the status of it.
I get it, but, uh, I mean, in, in grand scheme of things, everything runs through the annex.
Well, I agree.
Or, or the, the sheriff's department.
A hundred percent agree.
And so they're the ones that have to run.
Mm-hmm.
You know, other ones, I mean.
Well, somebody has to answer my phone.
Yeah.
Has to answer his phone. I don't have.
You gonna pass out your cell phone number, Bill?
Hmm?
Pass out your cell.
I pass out all y'all's cell phone numbers.
They've all got it. I mean, to me, it's a, I mean, if a department head wants to come up and say we need a generator, like, we're, you know, we're, we're a first responder organization where we're at, and we have, we have the fuel, we have equipment, we have communication, stuff like that. So it's, um, if someone wants to come and request for one, I would have troubles telling them, no, if they, if they can show that it's on the annex, I'm a hundred percent on board with that.
I don't mind you asking, you know, just don't get mad.
I might ask me, though.
Well.
We just got a lot of other buildings. We just got a lot of other buildings that are.
That, you know, when the lights is out, they're, they're there working.
Oh, yeah.
If you got a generator. I mean, we have to work in the dark anyway. Don't bother us.
We worked in the dark. Our spot, yeah, where we were at.
I mean, our generator's not really big enough to run very much of nothing, but it does run the, uh, fuel tanks.
But this, this runs your whole building.
It runs my building, it runs the JP building, it runs my shop, and it runs the hot oil tank that sits in the back. That if this week long power outage had been in February, we'd lost five thousand gallons worth of oil. Because it wouldn't have been no power to it. So, because it has to stay heated. Twenty-four steps. So anyway, that's my motion.
So did you price out just running the diesel and the oil heater? How big a generator that thing?
I didn't, because that doesn't take care of the JP.
I was just asking.
No, I didn't, because it doesn't take care of the JP. He has to, and him, when he goes down, all of our network goes down, telephones go down, email goes down, everything goes down at our shop. We're, we're just dead in the water.
How many days were y'all there?
We were down seven, a full seven.
Yep. Everybody around me was down at the house but me.
Yeah.
My generator was right back. Make the motion, Bill.
I make my motion to approve agenda item number thirty-six. Um, for precinct three, not to exceed eighty thousand. Everything goes over eighty thousand. I'll paper it out of my budget. And then your number would be what?
Uh, twenty-five is the, uh, be a comfortable quote.
And twenty-five thousand for precinct four. If you pay down project contingency funds.
That's my motion. Purchasing stuff.
Yeah, we'll go with Cheryl. Go through Cheryl.
I'll second that.
Moving second to all in favor, raise your hand. I'll oppose.
Oh, I got that, Bill.
Both, both of them were?
Yes.
Thirty-seven, discuss and receive information on certified values, final calculations and notices. For the no new revenue tax rate and approve voter approval tax rate.
We.
Lauren Stacy.
Show that information from the official district and I think Stacy is probably.
She's in the back. She's trying to hide, but I see her back there.
I didn't see her back there either.
So here to answer any questions that you may have. The uh, no new revenue rate forty-one, uh, point five three. And the voter approval rate forty-six point six two. And then the rate that uh, would fund the proposed budget is. Four one point five three. I'm no.
I think say, I like that number.
Oh, three would be the rate that would fund that proposed budget as per.
And, and the budget we're in right now is four one, two, three, two, seven?
Four, three.
I think four one, two, seven.
Something like that.
Yeah.
I, I just need a little help understanding why the no new revenue. This time is more than it was last time.
Stacy, you want to respond?
Uh, basically in the accurate calculations, everything about the known revenue rate. Is evening out and making each year look the same on improvements and value that exists in both years. Uh, so it doesn't take into account new value. It's, it's taking into account everything that was there last year, everything that was there this year. It also has to adjust for litigation. Uh, litigation numbers are significantly higher than they've been here over the year. Um. Every, every single adjustment, they, we've got the new twenty, section twenty-three, two thirty-one cap, which is. Uh, there's always been a homestead cap on residential homestead properties only. Um. We have to adjust down for the new cap that is everything that's five million dollars that is. Except, as for everything except homestead and one D one values. Uh, so another limitation. So market after present market value every year on January first. Slight of changes require limits on that value and they continue to do so. Um, there are more exemptions that are available out there. Um. As values continue to increase, more and more people are inclined. Uh, to transition their property to be keeping to wildlife. Add uh, anything they can do, uh, to save, to save tax dollars. So that's what that known revenue rate does. It just balances both years out. Um, and based on all the adjustments, uh, there, there wasn't as much growth this year. There wasn't as much increase in value. Um. An example would be multifamily housing. We've seen significant growth, not only in number of complexes, but in the value of those complexes year over year. Um. When the Fed and uh, interest rates are affected, costs are affected to maintain those properties. Um. There's not a significant increase from the prior year to the current year. I use that as an example because those are twenty-plus million dollar properties. So. A value that does not increase significantly on just one of those property. Uh, makes a significant impact to the overall value of the appraisable pool. Um, those aren't new properties, but their values, we're not seeing the climb in those values. Um, additionally, those are also categories where we're seeing more and more lawsuits.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stacy.
Stacy is the, the two hundred and forty-four million. Under protest. Is that, uh, when we do this worksheet here, I mean, it, it assumes that. That a hundred percent of that is not going to be collected, kind of just doing the math on it right here. Is that? What do we see from that historically? Do we see half of that? Or do you have to put? The hundred percent and say, we're not going to, could you, we subtract that from our number?
Of the lower value. So the, the calculation itself requires that I consider that because. I have to be less than five percent outstanding on July twenty-fifth in order to certify. These are the cases on July twenty-fifth that were still under protest. Obviously, I don't get numbers from most individuals when they protest. In other words, they don't tell me what they think their property is worth. They just tell me it's too high.
Right.
Um, and so in the absence of them providing a number. Um, the calculation, the software utilizes last year's number. And so it has to plug in a value. I can't put in zero. Um. Another area, you mentioned no, no, no revenue off of that number. Another area is going to be the tax ceilings. Um. That's typically a category that takes best. Um, but because though that category can defer and pay zero, they actually can pay zero. Uh, that is also deducted from your questions.
Something I noticed we had. It looks like a hundred and eighty-two million dollars of growth, but we have. Two hundred and forty-five million under protest. So it just, it makes it, it makes the number less this year. Than it was last year. So I don't, I don't. I didn't have a chance to look up what last year's protest number was. That seems kind of high, two hundred and forty-five million. I don't expect you to call it out of the air right now either. I wouldn't put you under that kind of pressure. Just, I'm just making a statement there.
Well, but anytime your valuation is going to go up, you're going to have more protests.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I don't know what our. With success, I, I, we protest, we have two or three little private, we walk in, we get it very kind. Not this year. Thank you. Kind of. So anyway. That's all I got.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, we received that information. Thirty-eight, discuss and take action on filing a proposed budget with the county clerk.
Is this the, okay, I, what you should have in your packet is some of the summary sheets, how that the uh, budget we've been talking about. Um. Let's get back to mine. And so the first sheet that uh, you were looking at is. Could be the summary page, but that's not what I am seeing in mine. Oh, the cover. That's just a copy of the cover and uh, the second page, one of the things we're required to put in the budget is. Form that is worded as this. So it shows that uh, the proposed rate will generate more revenue. Uh, it's going to show how the commissioner's court vote on that rate. Uh, as far as what they're going to propose in the budget. And then it gives some information on the, the different rates, rate for last year and then the calculated rates for this year. The next form uh, is showing a, uh, just a three-year summary of the budget. It shows your. Uh, estimated balances, your estimated or proposed revenues, proposed expenditures and the amount that will be left. At uh, the end of the year. I think the total proposed budget, um, is fifty million. Thousand, as you'll see, for the expenditure side of it. Yeah. Yeah, that's just a summary of priorly. Um, following is all of the changes from last year's budget. To the proposed budget. These are the supplemental items that are. Going down from one time and I was going and then a graphic that shows basically the split. Of the uh, the type items that were approved. And as court knows, and as is depicted in the graph, this year, uh, EMS was definitely, uh, the. Emphasis of the budget, uh, getting the service, uh. Enhanced in the ESD area, uh, in Riverside and then uh. Working with the paramedics, uh, increasing their salaries and for uh, retention and reduction. Uh, overall, two percent uh, raise for all employees plus four hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, and then maintaining our equipment and, and facilities. And going back toward the end of this presentation is the proposed salary scale and the departmental allocation. Uh, of course, the budget that we will actually file will have a broad information in it. It will have some merit in it. Additional detail. But um, it's as the court's been discussing. Quite a bit.
Right. You don't have the little pie chart on this one that shows the, like the allocation by various departments and different.
That will be in the budget.
I like that one. It's, I use that one a lot because it, you know, it shows that seventy-five to eighty percent of what we take in. Is public safety oriented of some sort from the jail, sold all the way down to the jail. It's. A, but a big pit stop, yeah. A big touch or control other than the salaries that fund it. So it's, we have a little piece that. I think our commissioners, I think we split about sixteen percent always.
Yeah, the, the budget that's filed will have a lot of graphics in it. It'll break it down into functional areas into departments. What percentage of the tax rate is, is going to uh, what fund? One of the numbers that I, I was working with over the weekend and the historically about seven percent of the tax revenues have gone. For EMS purposes, um, with the changes, about ten percent of the total tax rate will go into, um. The EMS fund. I think, um, if I remember correctly, about seventeen percent of the taxes go to the road and bridge fund. Uh, with the bulk going to general fund, of course, which is where. Uh, public safety excluding EMS is our judicial systems and uh, general administrative.
All the stuff we have to do. Absolutely.
I got motion.
We approve. I'll second that.
Moving second law in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-nine, discuss and take action on scheduling a public hearing on the proposed budget for October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. For August sixth, twenty twenty-four at nine AM at the Walker County Courthouse Commission's courtroom.
You have in your, having your packet, uh, a sample of what the notice looked like. Uh, basically yesterday talks about the tax. Generated. Moving the date and time of the hearing.
Make the motion. Go ahead.
Prove for approval.
I'll second.
Moving second law in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty, discuss and take action on proposed tax rate for October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Budgeted to include in the notice of public hearing on the tax increase. Republiques.
This is the, the budget, uh, is proposed and then this item, uh, the count of. The court votes on the tax rate to publish in the notice of public hearing that would be needed to fund this budget. So rate that the court has discussed today is point four four oh three. And this would be a record vote.
I'm going to read this so I get it right. I make a motion to set a proposed tax rate of zero point four four zero three per hundred dollars assessed taxable valuation. Maintenance operations rate of zero point four two zero eight and a debt rate of zero point one nine five. With a budget October one, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and include this rate in the required published notices.
I'll second that.
Moving second, start with Commissioner. Kirkendall.
Yeah. All right, I'm voting for it.
For it.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous. Forty-one, discuss and take action on scheduling a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at nine oh five AM. At the Walker County Courthouse for fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
And on the screen is a copy or anything in your packet is a copy that uh, you put the notice on the late hearing.
I'll second that.
Moving second law in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
It's Patricia. Again, we, we do appreciate uh, everything y'all have done. Like uh, Stacy's department, I know she bought a flat, but we have a very difficult job. Um, yeah. She's gone already, uh, but, but we appreciate all y'all done, uh, everybody's department. It's a, it's all a joint effort. Uh.
Thank you.
So it's not always easy decisions, but uh.
It's, it's a court decision and it is a.
Absolutely.
Can we make sure in uh, from the motion that was made that we uh. Go back and include the date and time of public hearing in that motion from forty, the last.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. So that the data of the. I'll just.
Nine oh five. Got anything to budget workshop?
No.
Right. No executive session, public comments.
Well, while they on public comments, one of my heroes from DPS is back there. Would you give us an update on the border, sir? It's still out there, right? You got some of your officers back around. I'm starting to see more and more of them around again.
So to give it to the full officer, it's all the forty-five. Uh, so in it, uh, the Walker County line going north. Trying to make sure we get the uh, more, more this uh, they're a bit under control. You start off with a right little bit more citation, unfortunately, that says the nature of the beast of our job. What it does is make Walker County a lot safer. You have a lot of vehicles that was going past us at ninety miles per hour. And now we're getting them under control. So. Appreciate everything you guys do, supporting us and we're going to continue to do our job and make Walker County safer.
I'm proud that y'all are back and I'm tired of them rude pieces of shit on the road. That's my statement for the duck.
I'll dive in with that because you go from New Waverly to Huntsville.
Yeah.
It's like the Autobahn and I'm proud, proud of the charge slowing that down a little bit. The wrecks have been very severe because of the speed.
Yeah, and it's brought up, uh, we started to get a little bit more activity on seventy-five as well. Tried to do it back on to uh. Back on to forty-five, the eighteen waters and stuff.
School starts in the morning for New Waverly.
Yes, exactly. And uh, that's one of the things that we're focusing on, for, for my troops. Just work both of those areas. You probably just do that the rest of the week to make sure we don't have any kind of uh. Instances where someone get hurt.
Thank you. The residents. You'd see seventy-five.
And all the way, we appreciate what you got, big force.
Anybody else? Chris? Doc? You thinking?
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
I forgot you was here. You did see that the Maldives was over there, right?
So. Are we gonna have trees in Huntsville in fifty years? With all these subdivisions coming in?
Well, you know, I'm anti-growth, but I can't say that about the rest of them. Well, you know I'm anti-growth, but I can't say that about the rest of them. I'm the one that don't want the growth.
Just, but I hope so. That's where oxygen comes from, so.
To answer that, like where we live, asking for it should not ever.
Well, that's funny.
Should not. I didn't say it wouldn't. One of the, one of the bigger worries too are is all the, all the timberland and all the forests and stuff like that. So a lot of the. Similar to the woodlands, not all of them. Some of them are similar to the woodlands and leaving a ring of growth and then plant stuff. Green areas and stuff like that. So, now you seen what we did.
Yeah, I sit down now.
Yeah, sure. Alright, questions for meeting? Mr. Cribbin? Commissioner's Court.